Okay. It is Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. We'll call the need to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and number.
Okay, minutes on our reports received and filed?
May 2020 report these filed and May 2020 part these filed.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports upcoming meetings and events.
We've got a coal can extension meeting Thursday. And then we've got the bicentennial kickoff at Marion Friday.
Yep. Eleven AM.
That's still about all the live meetings we're having yet.
But Coal County claim that's today, is that all of us or is that?
Yeah. Is that eleven? Try to Skype it in here.
Yep.
Have a whole lot to do now that Salute is moving forward with having their festivities. That's it.
We have a policy group call today at 1:30 if John sends us the. And tomorrow morning I'm gonna do K-Was at 7:05. Talk about our bicentennial. Friday, everybody's invited out to Marion at 11:00 AM for our bicentennial kickoff. Bob Purdy's gonna be the main speaker and he's really good.
So doing some kind of tours at ten first though, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So if you wanna get to early?
Yeah, yeah, so you can tour beautiful.
Lover's Leap or whatever.
Tour beautiful downtown Marion and see where the original courthouse and the original jail was. And then Saturday at 3:00 PM, there is a bicentennial reception, a prison brew, where you can sample our bicentennial bourbon, our Captain Cole Crimson Wine donated by the Nauts, and our bicentennial beer. So everybody come to three and we'll be out on the patio. So and that is all I have. Commission comments. Bids and contracts, renewal of PDMP user agreement. Kristi.
Good morning. This is the renewal of our user agreement with St. Louis County Public Health Department for the prescription drug monitoring program that we have here in the county. There is still no cost as they still have the federal grant that pays for all the costs for the counties to participate.
Okay.
Good, yeah. Have to be notarized too?
Yes.
Maybe that we sign the PDMP user agreement with St. Louis County Public Health.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bid award of 2020-15 Vehicle Equipment Install and Repair Service.
For 2020-15 Vehicle Equipment Install Repair Services for the Sheriff Department, we had three bidders respond and we are recommending to do Wireless USA.
Just trying to pull it up here and it's not working. Could be.
No.
Wow. Yeah. I couldn't read that if I wanted to.
Need the one and a half readers?
Here, you got, you're the youngster. What's it say?
I got it printed here. What it says, $110 per hour. Amount of time, hourly flat rate, eighty-five.
So I sent it to him so he could zoom in.
It's got each one. Now, if it gets too close to my face, I can't read it. So.
I'll just go with whatever.
You know, if you pulled up on your computer, you can enlarge the writing.
Zoom in.
I know, but that's too easy.
I wasn't gonna tell you that little trick. I thought.
I know. Hey, if you can't trust Jessica.
Is this a lump sum or was it just an hourly rate or?
It's an hourly rate.
Okay. So Wireless USA had the best hourly rate, looks like.
Yeah, they got them each individualized out there too for each install. So. I didn't go line by line, but it looks like they were on all the lines, so they were gonna be the lowest and best.
Alright, so are we signing a contract or?
No, just bid award today.
Okay. That's good.
Yeah.
Maybe that we award the Vehicle Equipment Install and Repair Services to Wireless USA.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Discussion and award of bid 2020-21 Countywide Telephone System.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here to talk to you about the countywide phone system upgrade that we're currently have been looking at and I'm here to make a recommendation. So the county purchased the existing phone system about twelve, twelve and a half years ago. I've entered about three and a half years and we've had ongoing issues with it when it comes to performance. The technology that's, the software that's inside it is outdated and also the hardware is as well. We continually have problems to include last night with a temporary outage at the sheriff's office. So we did this, had another outage about two weeks ago Sunday. And so this has pretty much been an issue since I've been here. And from what I can tell and from the different vendors I've spoken to, that the only fix is either upgrade or replace. So this is a mission critical system that involves, that makes a countywide impact. It impacts our ability to do business and it impacts, and therefore to impact the citizens as well. So we put the RFP out in January. Well, we first, last year we created a budget item of $300,000 for this particular system. And then in January, we put out an RFP to upgrade or replace our existing phone system. The deadline was extended to 4:30. Some of that was due to the COVID. Things have been going on and then just the timing of everything. We had eight respondents that responded to the RFP. The costs or the price varied greatly depending upon what the particular vendors were proposing. My mission and my job here at the county is to be able to make sure that the county can conduct and do business on a 24, 24 hours a day, seven days a week basis. That system includes and is not only involved with, with the sheriff's department and EMS in particular. The sheriff's department has three or four integrated systems that our current system works with. EMS also has different systems out there it's integrated with as well. So it's a priority that whenever, from the selection that we make, that we're able to make sure that the changeover does not impact those other systems. Those systems can include the call recording feature at the sheriff's office that is on the whole time. We can't have, you know, the continual outages and things like that. So when I went back and I put out the RFP, I took a poll basically of all the departments within the county as far as what they need to see within the new system. And I integrated all those things into what you see as like the RFP today. So whenever the different vendors responded, and I do appreciate each one of those vendors responding, because I know those things take a lot of work. But when I went through and I looked at it, so we had a committee that involved Melissa Johnson and Jessica Bryan and myself, and we went through and we compared, tried to do an apples to apples comparison, which we found very challenging because of the technology that's involved. But we were able to go through and evaluate each response based upon our needs and what our requirements were. And some of the bids didn't include, you know, an upgrade to what we call the Telstrat system, which is basically that recording system that I'm talking to you about. We also put an adendum out there that said we needed one phone model proposed, not multiple phone models. So as we went through and we evaluated those things, we found that a lot of the bidders put that option in there, but they didn't include that in their price. So, and that can make a significant difference because you're looking at over 300 phones, in particular the price difference. Then you're also looking at the Telstrat system, which is estimated about 42,000. So I mean, if you don't include those things in there, then the numbers would look skewed. So what we did was we went through and we added those things as much as we could into those other proposals to try to get an apples to apples comparison. And whenever we did that, we went through and we figured out that although CenturyLink is the highest bidder, they are, apples to apples, they're right there in the game. So they also fulfilled every aspect of the RFP. So my request is and what I need is, is an approval based upon council review of the purchase of the countywide phone system. And I'm happy to entertain questions.
Well, I think it's really important we keep the continuity. You know, I keep bringing up Camden County when their system went down. And again, I don't know what the cause of that was, but we can't be down. We can't, you know, we have to be in operation 24 hours a day, so. We've tried the cheapest and best and we've gotten burnt every time, so. I'm good with your recommendation.
So one of the things that we were talking about, you mentioned was the delivery of the product. Basically, as soon as we get this approved, we can get moving on it?
We can. So based upon an email from, we have a representative here from CenturyLink, by the way. Mark and Paul with CenturyLink. Based upon the email that I got from Mark, there's a three-week delivery time as far as once we place the order till the time the equipment hits the door. And then another three to four weeks when it comes to installation. So my estimate is four to six weeks as far as having the system changed out and working.
And then how much downtime from when you shut down the old system to the new system?
Based upon what Paul has told me, we'll go through and we'll get all the systems programmed prior to deployment. Then we'll get them positioned and then we'll do the cut over on a weekend. Because we all like working weekends.
But basically there was no downtime?
Right. Yeah, the only downtime will be the cut over. Absolutely.
I just thought those were some important aspects of some of the differences between them when we were talking about it. And Brian went through, well, the whole committee, I guess, went through a lot of work and got us a lot of information on it. So there's a lot more to it besides just some names and a couple of numbers. They had to put a bunch of stuff together. So I've looked at it and I've talked to Brian about it. I don't know if you have any more questions? I don't, I don't have any more questions about it.
So who will upgrade the Telstrat system?
So CenturyLink will be upgrading the Telstrat system.
Okay.
And we're gonna do the sheriff's office last, right?
That's not right. Don't laugh, Paul.
Might wanna start with that one.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think so. I think probably we would wanna start with the sheriff's. And I get a Ferrari red phone in my office, right?
You can get rid of my phone. I got a cellphone. That's all I need anyway. Yeah, they do go to it, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, I'm good with moving forward.
I think we had an agreement, but it's not been reviewed yet, so we can either approve it pending review. So we can get this moving. Is that kinda what you wanted to do?
Yes, sir.
You alright with that?
What if you have to change some wording or whatever in there?
Well, it's, review is, doesn't fail.
Okay.
Did I get the ball moving?
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're just awarding the bid today?
Yes, sir.
Alright. I move that we award the Countywide Telephone System bid to CenturyLink.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you guys. No problems, right?
No, no, that's just Debbie.
Hey guys, I live here, okay?
We got a, we got a bid for you. It might be in the sheriff's department.
Stay over there and keep those phones going.
He knows where I live too.
You guys don't have to stay if you don't want, so.
Okay. Unfinished business, discussion of recorder of deeds biological barrier pricing.
Thank you.
Killing trees this morning, huh?
I think last time I was here, you had asked to get some different quotes. So we looked at it from the lesser expensive to the greater, which is what we want. Because what we're looking at is stability and we're also looking at long-term. I can. The first one, the proposal is from Brady's. And it's the 9,000. It has the photo behind it. And this one, you're gonna see the vertical and horizontal frames. And it is more like a window with a bypass underneath. And it has the nicer brackets. And this one could go with our office as far as the renovation. It will fit. They can get the color and it bolts on the counter, so it's more stable. The window is more sturdy. It's not just plexiglass. The second one is also from Brady's. It's the $5,000 quote. It's, it's just vertical. It's only supported by the base. It didn't appear to me, the way he explained it, that it's gonna be as solid or as stable. And it has the parts that he would use and the glass would just slide down and sit on top of the desk.
Does that option matter pass through?
He said he could do a pass through. I, I don't know how because it just slides down. But he said we'd have to look at that, so I don't know for sure. The next one is from Bishop. To do it the way that we asked, he said you would have to increase that quote. He is just looking at basically putting up with a two-by-two square poles and installing the, the plexiglass. There's no top or bottom rail. It didn't look like it was going to, for us, be very sturdy or long-term. The last one is Mark's Mobile and that, I didn't care for it at all. I went out to Walmart on Stadium. If you go to the pharmacy area, they had installed some there and it is already coming apart. When you do just the plexiglass and they had put it up with some silver rims, it just didn't hold. For us, I mean, we're pretty busy. I think we're looking at more sturdy and long-term. And the last one I got actually from Steve. And that's not anything I'm interested in any way. It's just those guards. You would still have to be able to put them on your desk and function. I don't think it would be very usable or very friendly to use at all, but it was an option.
Was this something we already put in?
Right.
Was this something, this emergency proposal here, was this something?
That's a separate thing. I was gonna do that second if you would.
So what, I guess what is that? Trying to make head or tail of all this. So this emergency proposal for 2760.
So what that is, on that emergency proposal, that is when we first shut down. If you go back, I mean, now things are calmed down, so it's easier to sit back and look at what, what your needs are. But initially, when everything was shut down, we weren't. We were a central office and we had a function. Had 15 people in the office that day. So to keep our work flowing and keep things going, we put in a bypass window. The first one is temporary, which we still are using. And the window, the permanent window is gonna be here in two weeks. So I already ordered it and this is the invoice. I didn't know how to code it. I mean, it was done in a emergency state.
See, I've seen Legends Bank has this one. Which is that sneeze and I thought it, it looks, it's almost kind of invisible. You can see them, but it does protect their tellers from the public.
Okay. I'll go look at it.
Yeah.
Legends Bank?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, just down. But I think as far as, you know, you're able to see the person you're dealing with and everything, so it's, it's.
I think we have a hard time hearing people is what we're finding out, is seeing them and repeating yourself over and over.
These are on the existing walls that you have, right?
Yes. I mean, to me, I didn't wanna just have anything thrown up there because with the new renovation, it's an awful lot of expense to have that nice renovation and it looks really pretty. To go ahead and throw up just a bunch of.
I don't think them sneeze guards will sit on there very good. So, but I mean, what you're, what you're talking about, those there are more for on a counter.
Yeah, they are.
Even in front of your desk where you have more room. I don't, I don't know if those will fit on them walls very good and get knocked off and stuff, but.
Or do we have the room? That's what I'm running into is when you look at some of those sneeze guards with the base that they have, you're gonna sit those behind your PCs?
Can we table this? I'd rather come down here and take a look at your office and
Sure.
just kinda go over it, because we hadn't seen this till this morning.
Okay.
So if you're okay with that, I don't know if you guys are wanting to move with it or if you have something you wanna go with. But I'd like to look at it some more too.
Well, with the bypass window, one can function fine, so it's okay to table it.
Well, and that's something else I was gonna talk to you about too, you know, have a bypass or to where you can pass through. You wouldn't necessarily have to have it on all the windows and just see what your needs were and.
We just have it on one. It's just big.
So I'd, I'd rather go down and take a look at it and
Okay.
revisit it. I mean, you guys don't have to if you're.
No, I'm good. I'm just, we've got a big discrepancy from $9,000 down to.
$150.
Yeah, so, so, you know.
And it's functionality, it's sturdy, stability, and you don't wanna, to me, you don't wanna just cop something up there. I could go to Lowe's and get some two-by-floors for about $20.
Yeah, I'm good with table.
Okay.
I'm gonna just put back on next week's agenda then and if that's alright. So I know you're needing to get something going on it, but.
No, that'd be great if you wanna come take a look. Use the help.
Yeah, okay. Then do we need to do some, something with the emergency purchase? Did we already, we already talked about getting that, right?
Yes, yes. When you were in there, right at the beginning. And we had started this and we had so many people in there and needed to get them out, but we still needed a function.
So what do we need to do with it today? Debbie, are we needing to, or is it just a question as to what it was?
She gets the Brady's invoice, just bring it to me. Just a proposal.
Okay, yes.
The invoice, yes.
Okay.
Oh, that one we haven't decided. The, I think the issue with that was that, you know, we had called Samco and another company, but nobody else would come out and bid the counter. Loggies has not been ordered. That is still something that needs to be approved. That counter isn't gonna stick out anymore than the two tables we have out there. And I thought his estimate was actually pretty, pretty nice.
I thought you two said you were fine with that.
Yeah, I think, I.
I was fine with the table.
We're gonna set him up when he comes in.
Who cares that money for all this too?
Yeah. No, I'm fine with.
So Loggies counters gonna have to be done regardless of who does the screens, I guess?
Yes.
Well, you can do the screens without adding that countertop if you have tables, but the tables are they're movable too, so.
Yeah.
They're dysfunctional.
They take up a lot more space.
Get a smaller table. I got a saw. Take care of this.
It takes up more space.
Let's just do it all next week. We'll just do it all together.
That's fine.
So the counter is fine to order from?
Nope, we're gonna do it all next week.
We do it all next week.
We'll come down again and look and.
Changed my mind.
I'm gonna keep the table out there for you though, Joe.
Might be in my office, I don't know. I'll come down and we'll get done if you're around. Otherwise, I'll catch up with you sometime and look at it, so.
What, when are you coming? Today?
I'll get hold of you. Make sure you're gonna be around. It'll work for you. We got, yeah. It doesn't even have to be today if other stuff comes up.
Okay.
We'll take a look at it though.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
Thanks, Judy. Okay, do we have any other unfinished business? New business, Accounts Payable Review.
I'd ask for approval of Accounts Payable Pending Review.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second final reading of Budget Adjustment Number 11.
This is for $30,000. This is the EP, or EMPD grant for Centurion Siren. So, action today, just the first reading.
I thought it was second.
It's a second. Second, I need an action.
How much was that? Even?
Yes.
I mean, all confused.
I move that we sign quarter number 11.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That is the grant amount. It did cost more than that. The Centurion is paying for the.
Okay, that, I think that's where my confusion was, that on that, so, because I did hit a little bit of rock out there, I think.
Okay, discussion of COVID testing. I've got it, because it has to be notaried, so I was just gonna do that.
Great, thanks.
So as we discussed last week, we are trying to embark on an adventure. I think probably pioneers in the state here trying to develop an integrated testing site for here in Cole County, because some of the numbers have been dwindling with testing, and it's becoming increasingly hard for the hospital systems to operate their testing sites outside in the heat with staff and PPE. So we're trying to explore an option where we could come together and partner to alleviate some of the staffing and resource issues for everyone involved. So Amanda and Glenda here from Cap region again. Lisa Randazzo is here from St. Mary's. Crystal Sullivan is here from the Community Health Center of Central Missouri, and we don't have anybody from JCMG. So last Thursday, we got together, kind of hashed out initial proposal to bring to you, so, and we got some input from the sheriff, and Brian, and several others. But we really feel like the best option right now is to utilize Jeff's idea of the former Health Department building on industrial. It's empty. Brian was checking into getting internet, phone, and fax service for us. It's, the air conditioning can be turned on rather easily. We didn't have a chance to go over with all the partners yet and get to look at it for, like, traffic flow. We kind of have a vision of how it would work, but we just wanted to go ahead and bring this to you. I think, if possible, it would be great if we could have it up and running by June 15th. The sooner the better. This week's gonna be pretty warm for staff, and so looking at the proposal we put together, the bulk of the cost maybe is the supplies, and that was just a rough estimate from our facilities director for, like, trash service and paper products. It would be nice to buy a copier, scanner, printer, fax machine to have there in case they have paperwork. They get a lot of requests for tests. Some of it couldn't come through the VPN system. They might have to be faxed over there, or doctor's orders need to be sent elsewhere, so it would be nice to have a machine there. We would need a few refrigerators to store the samples in, but if the Health Department has to do mass vaccination clinics later, we will be able to use those to store all the cold packs and everything that we would use for our transport coolers. I wouldn't request at this time that they are the fancy Hellmer vaccine refrigerators. We could just use normal refrigerators to store the samples in, and then we could use those later, like I said, for our cold packs and other supplies at the Health Department. St. Mary's reported, on their comments, that they were renting their tent right now, and Becky said it was like $585 a day to rent the tent. So I called US Rent Oh, okay, on her paper it said a day. I was like, whoa, that's really expensive. So, I know. So I called US Rentz, and it sounds like for a 2020 tent with sides, it'd be about $8,000 to buy it, which, again, we could probably use that later for other county events. I was just trying to get a rough estimate. I talked to Larry. He said Public Works could help us if we needed to strike out the parking lot or put, almost like, you're in bay number one, and then you pull up, or, you know, the Public Works would be happy to do whatever we wanted on the parking lots. We wouldn't, I put $500 if we wanted to reimburse them for the paint or the time. So in the needs, you know, we would need to do that. We'll just took a layout of traffic flow and work on a floor plan with the building, because they would have to have, like, dirty zones and clean zones for PPE and storage. We would want to, we talked about PPE, having a cache of gowns and gloves and face shields there. The staff would bring their own N95s, because of course those have to be fit tested. But if we could buy and provide the cache of the kind of universal things, disposable things, of course, then that's, like I said, trash service. I talked to EMS a little bit about providing the PPE, and they don't have that much on hand, but they thought it could be ordered, just depending on how much we need. And Amanda worked up a little bit of numbers of how much, right?
Yeah, on a daily basis, if it's really gonna depend on your patient volumes as far as your gloves and stuff, but, you know, depending on the staffing volumes as well, which is also gonna depend on patient volumes. Yeah, I'm here, probably looking at five to six per day, depending on the number of staff that are
Right.
That would be changing at once, so we can continue to wear the same gown until it falls apart.
Right.
We'd have a change in staff.
And I put on the second page at the top, St. Mary's included how much PPE they've used as a total from those 53 testing days, so. And then we had some questions. Of course, we'll have to get Jill involved to see if there's, like, MOU or MOA is necessary between the agencies. If our nurses would have to be credentialed with the other facilities if we're doing the testing for them. Our nurses currently work under a participation agreement from, with, not participation, collaborating practice agreement with Dr. Kaywood for Cap region, but for St. Mary's, the staff that don't work for those hospitals will probably have to be credentialed.
We would treat our staff much like we do for health cares and things like that, so they're
They're good to go.
I'm sure Mary's is probably saying this, and
Right.
They're still trying to do a final
Question on that.
I can't imagine.
And then we had some questions about what hours. I think right now, one is eight to three, one's nine to five. I know that the hospitals are, would be running their elective surgery testing, pre-elective surgery testing through there, so they'd want to be open on the weekends, just so they could have those tests through there, and they would do the normal billing. You know, we wouldn't pay for the testing. They would bill it just like they are now, but it's basically like setting up the site. And then, I think everyone has some concerns about staffing, just because as their clinics get busier, their staff are being pulled into the clinics. You know, we would, we would love to help one day a week. The concern I have is, you know, at the Health Department, we have seven nurses. If we have another day, like last Friday, where we had to call, you know, over 100 people, or we get really busy with several positive hits on cases, it's gonna be hard for us to have two staff over there for a whole day doing testing, because it really, at some days at our Health Department, it's all hands on deck. So I have some concerns about that, but we want to help, and we want to do the testing. I know Crystal has some concerns, too, because they have 20 nurses. So exploring the options of hiring some nurses like PRN, and I know that both systems have some that are furloughed, that would, you know, that could be an option, because I asked the same question, is there nurses available to be hired for testing? So that is a concern for everybody with just staffing. And then, of course, if there was some sort of requirement or request or mandate from the federal or state government to make it where we offer testing for anybody who wants it asymptomatic or otherwise, we would definitely have to increase the level of staffing, because right now, we're just talking about having one registration person from St. Mary's, one registration person from Cap region, and then two clinic nurses that could be from all the agencies there. So that's not a lot of people, depending on the volume. And then, if, if we got to the point where we were using CARES money for the, to pay for the testing, for anybody that wants it, we would have to partner with the other counties, because I don't believe our CARES money could be paid, could be used to pay for residents from other counties. I think it would probably only be Cole County. So, and right now, they would be doing the billing for all their clients, so it wouldn't matter.
The Cole County Health Department would be overseeing the operation?
Well, we
Nobody raised
Yeah, when it was like, who wants to schedule all the staffing? Nobody raised their hand. Yeah. Yeah, that's one of the questions we had on Thursday. It's like, no one wanted to be the scheduler or the overseer, so
You know, I sent you that email. I think CARES Act money for all of this, but I think, and you guys are gonna have to figure out the logistically how this would work, but Cole County Health Department contracts with the other agencies to provide these services. And even then, I mean, you could charge to a certain extent, so you could even hire more personnel, but it's Cole County spending the money for COVID-19 related
Testing, testing.
Uh, testing and associated services. So you might think about structuring it that way, and that, because that's what the money's for.
She's our county council.
Kristin, you wanna weigh in?
I feel the same way. I mean, I think we need to structure it as we're opening a testing site. We're going to contract with these other agencies to make that happen.
Okay.
I think you could hire additional staff on a part-time basis. You're just gonna have to make it known that
This is just for the testing, part-time, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, right now, our CARES Act money runs through December 31st, so it definitely has a hard deadline of that 31st at the moment.
Right.
Of course, everything is changing rapidly, all the time, so that could
Well, this push, hey, too, you could pay the other agency money. And so if you all needed more nurses to do the testing, that way you've got the funding, and it's CARES Act money, and it's Cole County paying for those services to be provided.
Yeah, and that would probably be easier than us hiring the staff for credentialing and those things.
I mean, this is something we all want to sit down and hammer out.
Well, and I think that we probably can look at mom through home raising kids, and now the kids are back at school. Those day periods, I'm not concerned about. It would be, you know, some of the issues that have kind of come up, too, is I work eight to five or nine to six or whatever, and the place isn't open anytime that I can be there. I can't take on work to be tested, so the weekends are sometime that those people would be tested or in for, too, but I don't think those would be as difficult probably to manage, especially getting out of summer, going into fall.
My staff suggested maybe staggering to one day it's eight to noon, the next day it's open 12 to six. That way, you have different hours. So we can work out the hours.
So a couple of questions. So you started off the presentation about being outside in the heat, and yet we're talking about tents, so
Well, the staff would be inside, but when they go out to take the sample, they want the tents in case it would be raining, or, I mean, the shade, things like that. But the staff don't want to bring the patients inside the building. They would stay in their car. So the tents would just be for the cars to pull through.
So for sanitary purposes, the collection needs to take place outdoors, because of air isolation and particles and those types of things. So if you do the collection indoors, the room has to settle for so long, be cleaned, and then it can be reused. If you do the collection outside and in the open, you don't have those concerns. So you can just continue to, and currently, we do all of our collection of vehicles. They don't even step out of their vehicle.
They use the tents in case it's raining or just shade.
Just protecting elements.
Yeah. And then we were thinking that we might, the city said they would put the bus stop back there, because they took it out when we moved, so we might have some people that arrived via bus, so they might need, you know, a shelter, but we would not let them in the building.
So is there RNs that can be hired to do this? Are there people that are laid off that are available to work this, or?
And it's not an RN, it's not required, so it's clinical, so we go RN, LPN, RMA. There's different levels of the clinical staff, so that would, you know, your salary would, you know, a dollar per hour would range greatly, depending on who you hired. We would have to look at all our available staff. We have things currently out on furlough and
At St. Mary's, you thought that you had
We have, we've only been using RNs at our tents, and we do have nurses that are still on furlough. Our furlough is scheduled to end August 1st. So we have to look a little bit more.
So, and then you said that we didn't have the PPE available to stock this, so where are we gonna get that?
He didn't, they don't have it, like, in their inventory right now, but it was able to be ordered.
So ordered means six, eight weeks, two months, three months?
He said
Because stuff's not available now. Stuff's been ordered for months that we haven't been able to get.
Matt indicated it wasn't gonna be that long, maybe a month, two weeks to a month. But I'm sure they have some that they're, yeah, they have some they could bring now, and then we could order in. No, they will bring their own anyways. We're just talking about face shields, gloves, and gowns. And at the ESC yesterday, David acted like the gowns were the hardest to get. But of course, they have some on hand now.
As I say, you've got enough to do it on hand right now.
Right.
How are you doing it? And this is why we're trying to do this integrated site, is to reduce how much we use, so
Well, and we had talked about them, just everybody bringing so many, and like, kind of put them in the kitty at the beginning, just so people don't have to bring it with them every day, having that cash there.
That would help. Since it's gonna be potential staff by multiple agencies, then it's just an equal distribution among the
Right. Because like, right now, we don't have face shields. We have gloves, of course. We don't have face shields and gowns at the Health Department.
So all the tents right now that y'all have are rented?
Ours is not.
But it's attached to a trailer. They can't.
Okay.
Ours is MU.
Okay. Well, that was the same. You just got it pinned to the ground. Let's just
No, they said it's attached to
It's actually physically attached to the little, you know, the trailer.
And then St. Mary's is rented?
We rent the one that the car drives under, but we don't have enough time where we're housing our computers and supplies right now. We're fully outside.
So you had indicated something about people coming from other counties. How would those counties or those patients be charged for that, and who's charging insurance, who's paying for that?
We probably would operate out of each of our EMRs, so registration, billing, all of that would take place. So capital region patients, St. Mary's patients would be registered separately, and that's why we would have our registration staff from each of the different facilities there.
Basically, just like they're doing it now. They're doing all their billing. We would not be paying for any of the testing at this time. In the future, if they want us to test anybody who wants it, we would have to explore that. But right now, that's why they each have their registration staff there, and they would do their billing, just like they're doing it now.
And it'd be open to anybody, not just Cole County?
Well, it's their, their patients, yes.
And currently, it's like that, because our eight-county service area, of course, has a lot of people for surgeries.
Yeah, we're not
And it's a bundled charge with the surgery, so we don't get paid anymore for it, but it's part of that surgery charge.
Since we'll be requiring physicians' orders, we'll have those orders available to see in our system, so that there won't have to be a central repository for orders. It'd just be us operating our separate orders can join together in one place, with shared staff and PD.
Well, I think at the original meeting, y'all said that y'all would still do the pre-op testing, so, but we're actually gonna do the pre-op testing. Y'all will just have it sent to us, and we'd bill it out, so
No, they're, they're gonna do their own billing. We will not be doing any billing.
No, that's what I meant. They're, they're gonna take care of the billing part.
Yes.
We would get reimbursed for pre-op testing.
No, we're not, we're not gonna have anything to do with the billing or anything of paying for the testing. We would just maybe have staff there. They're gonna bill it just like they do now.
As long as
So we're gonna do the testing, and they're gonna get paid for it.
Well, we're not, we might have staff there that works one day a week. They're also gonna have staff there that works. We're gonna try to share some of the staff costs.
We had talked about
So we're gonna do pre-op testing, and they're gonna get paid for it.
But we're still sending the samples to our labs to actually run the tests, so the shared staff are collecting the tests, and the registration, the billing, the actual running of the results of the test, and then follow-up will go through each of our hospitals.
Both of our current sites are performing the testing for a lot of the, for the community health center, and some of JCMG's as well, currently.
So then we're just providing the place and materials?
Yeah.
So if it's pre-op testing, it's not any of our Health Department people or anything else that we're paying for. I guess what I'm getting at is just
It would depend on the day of the week.
Yeah, it could be our staff.
But the pre-op stuff, if we're gonna be doing that, then
Well, that would be
We should get some kind of reimbursement for that, I would think, too.
Well, part of the issue is, no, you don't get reimbursed for it. It's part of a, I mean, we get the same amount whether we do a gallbladder with or without testing. It's paid the same.
But you're gonna pass the expenses on to the county to do that now for your pre-op?
No.
Yeah, because we're gonna be doing the testing. We're gonna have it at our site. Y'all may have your nurse doing it, so we're picking up
All we're basically doing is picking up what we have now, and Mary's has now, and moving it to another site, and then asking for the county to help us with things like PPE and that stuff.
Yeah, so it's being passed to us, so. There is a Yeah, so it's being passed to us. So there is a cost that is involved with that.
Absolutely. There, there's always a cost in it, but it would not make sense for us to keep our own site for our pre-op testing and yet open another site. We'll just stay where we are.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, that there's no sense having, that's why I'd want to have an integrated site.
Yes. It would be less costly for everybody to do that.
So what, um, what kind of staff timer are we talking about that the county would incur? And then I guess, I mean, are we talking about billing that staff time to cares? And, um, I mean, hiring of additional people that would be billed to cares? And those would all be costs associated to the county? I mean, because there's, there's a lot of costs here. I mean, I'm looking at 50 grand easy in just these upfront costs, 10, we haven't talked about rent.
Right. If we had health department staff, the nurses that work their testing, we were talking about taking turns. So we would have, you know, two nurses there one day a week. Or the, as we talked about, the other option is to hire PRN, you know, temporary nurses to do that, either through the health department or through one of the other agencies. And of course, we would have to have cleaning staff. The building would have to be cleaned every night.
The whole idea of the care money is to, for situations like this. So to me, um, that's why we got $9 million is to take care of our community. So.
And you will never make money from testing, not like this. Currently, we don't get anything for those that don't have surgery or anything. We get an health reimbursement for those.
Don't we have tents at emergency management?
She's, I think we still have the western shelter tent. It hasn't been loaned out, but I don't know anything about it, like how big it is or.
You can't drive through it.
You can't?
Yeah.
You get a big run out of it, you can't.
It's huge, but you can't drive it because of the poles.
Well, it's set up to, what that's western shelters for is for NOC. So you go out, drop it, you put up an emergency operations center. So.
Yeah, I was thinking about that big of one.
It's huge.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just talking about, sure, they've got some other tents around and we can use for this.
So you're using MU's right now. Do we have to return, does that have to be returned at any particular time?
It's purchase.
I mean, that's something we probably ought to check with them about first, but you need another one.
Oh, okay.
My concern is, is particularly if we get to a point, which I suspect we will in the county, where we're going to have to do testing period in the county. And we're kind of set up and ready to go for that. And certainly help Christie with those needs because they certainly, you know, when they demand a thousand tests a day, that's going to be their number issue. Not sure that's helpful, but.
So what we got to do next?
Well, if you agree for us to proceed, then I think the best thing to do would be for us to sit down with Jill and the appropriate staff from the facilities to come up with an agreement on how we can structure a contract.
Yeah. I mean, I think y'all went, came a long way since last Tuesday because we kind of threw this up and said, let's get something planned and throw together an idea. I mean, the concept is there. So hammering out some details on it will probably get down to dirty, but that's the fun stuff.
Devil's always in the details.
I don't think there's any way you're going to get it done by the 15th. I mean, you're lucky if you get it done in 30 days.
That was kind of our, our, our hope, just for staff. It's, you know.
So if we.
Our hope for staff was to have it quicker than, yes.
I, I looked for our site yesterday morning in the morning in full gown and I was drenched in sweat. And it was a nice breeze and it was a beautiful morning, but it's, it's rough out there.
It's like doing surgery in the sun.
Yeah.
Yeah. This week's going to be rough. And Brian was checking on just when we could get the internet and other systems.
Pretty tight for any provider to get infrastructure put in place. I will tell you that. So the estimates I've gotten so far is we've got a 30-day staff time. And we're looking at a 100-bed connection that goes both directions. That would support the amount of traffic that you guys are looking at pushing through that pipe back to the respective locations. Looking probably about $4,000 just in the startup equipment in the way of putting a firewall and things like that if you want to, if you want to do those kinds of things. So, you know, it, it just takes, takes time and scheduling.
If I get interject, if CenturyLink is a part of that discussion, we need to look at any type of build that would extend that time.
Right.
So the quicker we can look at getting that moving, the better off you are in getting it installed.
And you can expedite that, right? But he knows where you live.
No, that's Paul.
I bet you can find out where you live.
We, we can talk to Brian about it, but from a COVID perspective, you know, we've got some avenues that we can go to expedite things. But still, if we have to do any type of trenching or anything like that, I don't expect it, but I can't guarantee that until we have forward moving into that location. But we can do some exploring on it if necessary.
I can't vote on this, but this is what care, the care money is, is far. So I would like to see you two take action today and get moving.
You're to be seen and not heard.
I am. I can't vote on that.
You're influencing.
Oh, disregard. Strike that from the record.
Backup power?
So we would put in a UPS, you know, but I think facility, I think one UPS will be plenty and it will be, the cost will be low for my equipment. I don't know about their equipment because I'm sure their IT folks will probably supply what they need by way of their IT infrastructure. But regarding as far as mine goes, I'm not worried about that. I've got battery pack.
What about a copier, scanner, printer?
You would have to buy a brand.
I had four, so I was close. I just thought it would be good to have there.
That's again, you know, if you kind of get the order.
So are you looking to buy a tent? And I'm sure probably everybody else is out trying to buy a tent right now, too. And so probably not available, is what I'm guessing.
Yeah. When I, I just called one vendor this morning. They didn't tell me how long it would take to get it.
The CVV actually has some tents that they run out time to time. They use for their athlete events, but.
Are they the big ones, like 20 by 20? You could drive through?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know Diane, might call and ask her.
If we could use it until we, the other one came in.
I think they have two.
Are we talking about concrete blocks to secure the tent or are we talking about driving stakes through the parking lot or?
Probably have to be driven down with a tent that big.
They have got.
Probably depends on the tent.
Five-gallon concrete buckets for holding it down.
I'd say you're going to have to drive them into the ground because those buckets are going to go for a ride.
Just before they start driving stakes or anything else, they need to get everything marked. So those stakes are, from experience, they're three feet long and they'll go right through just about anything with enough force. So.
So in that agreement, we may want to look at travelers and liability with not, they're not.
Sure. You know, they have their own professional liability insurance.
But it's having an actual plan.
Well, yeah. I mean, just like the health department, but that is something to take in. And again, you know, Debbie, that premium, additional premium could probably come out of the CARES Act. Because all of this has not been appropriated. I mean, we've got $9 million.
None of it's been yet.
Is there going to be any additional costs of updating the facility at all or are you just going to use it as is? Or waters, sewer, I mean, we got all that turned on or?
I didn't ask Greg about that. He had to like, it was mostly like paper products, cleaning, the trash service. I didn't ask about the water.
Water's not on at this time.
It's not. So we'll have to turn the water on, the air conditioning.
I can tell you that.
And then they haven't been able to see inside yet, but we didn't anticipate doing any renovations inside. The staff just need someplace to go in and there's upstairs, those three offices. That could probably easily be the dirty area and then the other could be the clean area. We could even just set up tables and chairs in the conference room or out in that main area where we used to have cubes for the computers. It doesn't have to be anything fancy because, like I said, they won't be bringing patients inside. We are talking about just using the upstairs because of the air conditioning and the facilities that are up there. But we hadn't quite worked out the logistics of where the registration staff and where the testing staff would be. Because like I said, they haven't got a chance to look at it yet. There might need to be a little work to the upstairs door to make it easy to get in out, in and out with a tablet and a testing, some of that, you know. Because it's not an automatic door and it's pretty heavy. So.
And then you said something about a cleaning service coming in daily or?
Yeah, well, need to be cleaned every night, I would suspect.
You have an idea how much that's going to be? Is it the whole building or?
No, it would just be the upstairs. It would be a small area. What?
Yeah, is that the dirty area?
Yeah. Yeah, probably not even the, the clean area they keep. It's just the dirty area. We hadn't talked about that because if we do keys, whoever, the registration staff will have to have the keys. So I don't think it needs to be an electronic service, something simple. I don't, I don't anticipate that. Do you guys think it'll be a problem?
The only security you can type in is more for assisting with the registration. We've got cameras set up so we can see the line of cars. So you know when somebody's coming in. If you're going to be sitting inside, if you're going to want us to have.
The good thing about sitting upstairs is you can watch the whole parking lot. You can see.
Very good.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's really nice because you can sit upstairs. You can see them pull into the parking lot and go walk over to the door. It actually will work pretty good.
So what do you need to get it done in 14 days, 15 days?
I like the challenge.
I like the challenge too, but yeah. So that was like our initial goal, just to try to help. But it sounds like the IT info thing might be a barrier to 15 days.
I don't know. Mark just committed to getting it done.
How did I get this that you were here today?
Hey, you know, we record this too. So.
Aside from that, what would be next on the list to take the most time?
Probably to make sure that the, you know, the building is great. I didn't realize the water was turned off. Otherwise, I would have asked Greg about that. I was just asking him about air conditioning and other supplies.
We know people that work at utility companies.
Okay. So that would be pretty easy. Um.
Do some begging. So about the tents?
The tents, maybe.
If we could maybe talk to somebody that rents them, I'm not going to mention any names.
Right. Like I said.
See if they have any available that we can buy.
Right. Well, I called a vendor this morning.
We're going to have it for till December 31st, pretty much at this point.
Exactly. Well, and I asked about renting versus buying and that's when they're like, if you're going to have it for three to six months, it's, you're better off to buy it.
For that price tag that you have in there, we can get our names put on it. So.
And keep it for, you can use it at the fair.
I'd rather you shoot it higher than lower.
Use it later. We can use it for mass vaccination.
We were actually looking at trying to buy something like that. So in next year's budget. But if we need to, we could move that up and just give it to you guys.
We're not putting your picture on there, Tom.
No, I don't want to scare people away.
It might not be a bad idea.
Yeah.
We can talk about that.
Well, I mean, once we get it, we'll have stuff that we can use it for other places.
I think we would have, if we would have it, you know, so.
Well, and if we have to do other mass vaccination events.
We have to have it now for this, though.
Right. Refrigerators, I think we could probably just go purchase a couple. They don't have to be, like I said, they don't have to be the special, special homers.
I think appliances right now are at a premium as well. They're hard to get hold of. So that'd be something to check.
We do have one, we have one extra at the health department we can move over to.
And Christine, we have one that we're using over time.
Well, there you go. So we might not have to buy them.
Okay. So maybe PPE is the, you've got some of that.
They'll bring theirs until we can get it ordered in. Yeah.
And this is supposed to use less of it. So.
Mm-hmm. That's the goal.
Should make more available. The MOU would probably be one of the things. Takes a little while to draw up and get agreed on. So who's doing the scheduling or do we figure that out?
Depends on how we set the structure.
Yeah.
Nobody's raising their hand again.
Yeah, nobody wants to be in charge of herding the cats.
Christine could probably actually put that in a charge shift's Excel spreadsheet and make it available online.
Oh, perfect.
Just have somebody have oversight of it.
Right. That's what happens when you're not here. This is recorded and broadcast, Linda. Yeah.
Just of all time.
So it sounds like we could, we could start to make things happen.
I think Chris made it a challenge. He said, he said you can't do it 14 days. Let's, let's see what we can do. It's Cole County, boys. Look out.
When you want something bad enough, you can make it bad.
Yeah.
One other thing is I don't know if a 20 by 20 tent's going to be big enough.
That was just what the vendor I called this morning suggested for driving through. Like I said, I called to just, when I saw, what I thought, I got from St. Mary's. It said $585 a day. I was like, I'm just going to call and see how much it would be to buy one. Of course, that was a week, but. I just, like I said, I called one vendor just to get a quick quote, an estimate this morning. So, and that was just a ballpark figure. So.
Well, at the time, we really didn't know we could still be out there.
Right. You're just like, let's, we need a tent. We need it now. So we can, we can check around for a tent, different prices. I just called this morning.
You can get a fireworks tent for about five or six grand. So.
A what?
Fireworks tent.
Oh, good.
So.
But we were talking about having them pull up the side driveway. So we need one that fits right there. And they would come out the side door to do the testing and then pull out. So it's kind of the vision.
20 by 40 frame tent for drive-through or drive-by testing, $2,995.
Well, there you go. Is that on Amazon?
I'm not giving any free advertising out to anybody.
Ship for free, free ship. Oh, shipped in 2021. Yeah.
You don't need to mention names. It's going to make money.
Just kidding.
I would suggest you spend more than that if you want it to last.
Yeah, I'm sure you'll want to look at some of the material on those and compare them, but. But maybe need to be 20 by 40 instead of 20 by 20. If you're getting two 20 by 20s, it might be easier to handle two of those instead of one, but.
I think we need to look at the space on that hill.
Right.
A 20 by 40 might be hard on that hill.
If we have to rent for the first two weeks or something, then do that.
Right. Well, I mean, we could use the one that St. Mary's has for just a couple of weeks until we got ours in. If they've already got it rented, you know, we can explore some options like that. Does it have sides on it too?
It has, the way we're set up, it had wind sites when it was colder when we started. We have that down home. The other side backs up to our hatchback times. And ours is anchored with these big, to me, it looks like a cylinder block, but they're huge. I think they said they weigh 750 pounds.
Oh, the big ones, yeah. Those probably won't move.
We had to tighten straps a few times. It's been in a lot of winds.
Right.
Did you check with Seema to see if they had a tent?
No, I haven't. I didn't give it to him.
And we can check on ours too because the drive-through tent portion is not connected to the mobile site.
Oh, okay.
Separate.
Okay.
Seema would be tough, probably. They probably, the resources are probably deployed pretty hard.
But we don't have anything besides the western shelter tent in our.
Uh, they have a couple of the tents that you can stand under, you know, but they're not big enough, yeah, but they're, they're not big enough for drive-through.
But they might be good for our shelter if we have people come off the bus and just need some shade or if we have registrations, you know, other staff outside.
Might be a bad idea, but you have to do like Chris said, you have to really anchor them down and those aren't, they, those don't weather too well.
Right, I know. We have one of those at home.
I'm, I'm good with moving forward, so.
Well, just let us know what you need.
Okay.
So make some calls or whatever.
Anyway, we just need to get an M O U or, or something drafted so that we can.
Okay.
Uh, what? We're going to need a way to expend some funds. Uh, you said something about it earlier.
So I would really like to, if you want this to come out of CARES Act money, to create a project in that fund for each individual project that you approve. And I would like to start that from the beginning so we can track those costs in those projects. So if this is one that you're thinking needs to come out of CARES Act money, I'd like to get that approval upfront so that we can start tracking it from the beginning in the accounting system as a film project.
So as we build the M O U, should we go, or M O A, whatever we have to, should we go ahead and build staffing in there in anticipation that we're going to need to hire some or use, wait for that?
I think you have to build some staffing in. I don't think you're going to be able to keep up with what y'all are trying to do right now and the testing.
That's what I was hoping you would say, but I thought I'd toss it out there.
I mean, hiring contract staffing, Debbie's not here, Greg. Is that, um, oh, there she is. Is that a contract employee, uh, someone that we're going to issue a W nine with no benefits and would not be associated with county or how does that work?
Do that because that would be an independent contractor and an independent contractor, you can't designate the hours that person's working. They have to be, have a whole lot of autonomy. So I would say these are temp employees.
Okay.
Or could we build that into our contract costs with the hospital assistants and let them be their employees since they have to credential them and they would ensure them?
If we, that's why I suggested we make this a contract for services.
Perfect, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
That way we can expand CARES Act money.
Yeah, and as the health department, it would be hard for us to credential them and get them under our standing orders and we would have to cover their insurance, but if we contract with them, then it's all covered under them.
Okay.
What about your onsite? Have y'all had any issues with security wise or onsite?
No, we weren't sure in the beginning, um, what it would be like, and we've not had any problems. The, the worst problem we've had, I think we both have, is after we're closed or before we open, people physically getting out and being the cones and coming up anyway and calling. We've not had any incidents.
Say we've not had any incidents. I think the, the biggest thing that, you know, you just get uneasy when somebody walks up, so, or they come up on a scooter or whatever. You're just expecting them in a vehicle, but there's never been an issue as far as security goes.
It has been very pleasant.
So just making sure that we're recouping all our staff time, all the benefits, health insurance, all those costs, not just an hourly rate, so.
Oh, for if our staff work there?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so we should go ahead and proceed, try to get the agreement to be signed at next week's.
We need some more numbers. I mean, you said four thousands dollar startup costs over there. I mean, there's, there's a whole.
Thirty-nine, well, thirty-day window to get things going the last part.
Right, but we need, we need an idea of what, what this total's going to look like.
It's on camera.
Just be. I think there needs to be security in that.
But you have a pool.
At a minimum, some, or, or, you know, our, our vendor would be used for monitoring inside of building.
No, we can talk about that in close session.
It should still be there.
About that, the security part of it.
So is it waiting too long to sign the contract next Tuesday if we really want to try to get it up and running as soon as possible?
What contract?
Between the agencies.
Well, but Chrissy.
It took you that long getting it together probably and.
Okay.
Well, get it together and then the other people are going to have to take it back to their respective, you know, hospitals or clinics or whatever and get them to approve it. So it's going to take. More than two days.
Right, I was just trying, I agree with that. I just want to keep, keep things moving if we want to try to get people in there as quick.
Fairly open for meetings.
Quick as possible.
If you get it ready by Friday, let us know if we have to schedule a meeting.
But we can go ahead and proceed with the other parts of it, getting things.
Yeah.
Ordered.
Yes.
Okay.
On our, yeah.
I don't want to wait for the contract to start the IT process.
To stand up the site, we can do that.
Okay.
And as far as the agreements with the other entities, we can work on that.
Perfect.
So we can parallel.
Yeah, I didn't want to wait for the contract to get things rolling.
No, getting the building ready.
Yeah, we're going to do it.
Internet service, phone fax, supplies, refrigerators, copier, scanner, fax. Is that something we can bid on, uh, buy on state contracts? Okay, P P E.
They can bring their own until we can get some ordered.
That's fine.
Mike, we can go.
I mean, I mean, all this stuff, signage, signage, striping of the parking lot, talking to public works, I guess.
Yeah, I mentioned, I talked to Larry yesterday. He said, just let him know what we needed.
And then find him a tent.
Yeah, a tent, yeah.
Yep.
Well, and like I said, if they could bring theirs for a little bit until we figure that out too.
That's fine.
Everybody's.
I have a question. If this is coming out of the CARES bucket for the county, um, and we're going to pay your staff out of CARES, would we pay all the staff working there out of CARES since it's for the entire county or how do we do that?
That's going to be, that's something we're going to discuss at that meeting. Well, and you're going to have to watch Christie's staff if they were already in the budget prior to, if they're still working public health related issues.
You can't.
Cannot cover their staff time with CARES money. So if it was something that was already in place in your budget prior to, you cannot supplant that with CARES money. If it has to be something that's come about.
Yeah, if you hired that staff, P R N.
We at some point need to discuss. It's going to come out of one or the other.
But if it's, it's structured so that the health department is contracting with these other agencies, that is not an expense that's currently in the health department's budget. Correct. So I think we, this discussion would probably be best to. We just need to talk through the different. Yeah.
To stay in our schedule. Okay, thank you. We'll proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What else we got?
Yeah, I know.
That was it.
Hey, Chris, do you want to talk about the Graves Menu Maker's Milk, uh?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I was, could we, now we're just too informational.
Right, I don't have the location of where they're going to be. I think that's on the United Ways website, but Ann Bax mentioned yesterday. Oh, it's at Little Explorers, right. So they must have a, a agreement, anyway, tomorrow, no, Thursday, they're going to be at Little Explorers and they have a truckload of like four thousand gallons of milk that they're going to give out and, um, I think that she mentioned that they have six truckloads of four thousand. So I don't know if they're going to try to give out all six this Thursday, um, but they're going to have different events. So this first one, they've advertised through a lot of their partner agencies, but in the future, they're going to try to advertise it more community-wide because they really just don't know what to expect with this first event and how fast or slow, uh, four thousand gallons of milk will be given out because that's a lot of milk.
It is. I thought that was pretty neat.
It is.
Is it chocolate milk too?
I don't think so.
Uh, you have to add your own chocolate.
Is it central, is it central dairy milk?
Um, I don't, I don't know.
Interesting.
I thought that was kind of neat.
Unless it's somebody else bringing in milk for competing.
I was trying to get rid of it. There's a lot of them there.
I think there's a lot of the farmers are just dumping, dairy farmers just dumping their milks though.
Hey, make more ice cream. I'll help you out there.
Okay, okay.
I'm not as big on the milk, but that ice cream, look out. Is that it?
That's, anything else?
You're keeping moving.
Usually you've got, uh, uh, anything?
Uh-uh. Eleven o'clock for the.
We recess until eleven T M.
Got the Zoom meeting, talk about the roof at the law enforcement center.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Isn't it?
Oh, maybe. Is it, is it closed?
Well, I got the invite, so I assumed it was on the agenda.
The last agenda I had came out last week and it did not have that.
Okay, I thought that was on the agenda, I apologize. So if that's not on the agenda, then we can all be there anyway.
Well, you can't, unless it's an emergency.
No, I thought it was just part of the, I thought it was part of the agenda, so.
We'll figure that out.
All right, yeah. Second.
All in favor?
Uh, just on the law enforcement.